To call the April 5, 2022 public hearing to order. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Here.
Forster.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Takaoka. Schenk.
May I have a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's public hearing?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president pro tem or chairman pro tem for the duration of this meeting.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka. Schenk.
Okay, the hearing on the budget is open. It's on our village budget. Do you want to explain what we're...
Good evening. Budget discussions were held at the Committee of the Whole level on March 1 and March 15. The Committee of the Whole approved a budget of $45,265,447 for all village funds. The general fund was approved in the amount of $35,349,000 and $144,000. The proposed fiscal year 2022 and 2023 budget has been posted on the village website beginning February 23 of 2022. Notice of this public hearing for the proposed budget was published in the Lake County Daily Herald on March 18, 2022. At this time, we are looking for public comments with a plan to pass the village's fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget ordinance at the upcoming village board meeting to be held on April 19 of 2022.
Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on our budget?
I would call for a motion then to close the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
So may.
Second.
Okay, is that...
All in favor of the order?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, okay. That's closed. Now, back to you, sir.
I'd like to call the regular village board meeting of April 5, 2022 to order at 7:07 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Here.
Schenk. Takaoka.
Oh, it's it.
You're right. Changed my mind, I'm here.
Is there a motion to nominate a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
Would you like to be a chairman again?
Yeah, yes, I'll take, yeah.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman for this meeting as well.
I will also second it.
Roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Cook.
Aye.
Schenk.
You know what?
Takaoka.
Okay, all right, motion carries. So since we're all here and the meeting's all called to order and everything else, would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other...
Okay, are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not currently on the agenda on the Committee of the Whole? No, all right. Okay, then, under village president, we've got several proclamations. Village President's proclamation on National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10 to the 16, 2022. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of the police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Vernon Hills Police Fire Communications Center. The public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications for the village of Vernon Hills, Lincolnshire, Libertyville, and Countryside Fire Protection District have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And each telecommunicator exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be resolved that the village of... Board of the Village of Vernon Hills declares the week of April 10 through the 16, 2022 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Vernon Hills in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our village and citizens safe. Chief, did you want to... Okay. And would you like to mention anything about this while we're... Because that is one of those jobs that people don't see. People don't really know it's there unless you absolutely need it. And I know my sister did that job for a lot of years, and it's a very critical job.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree with you more. I will deliver this to our telecommunications personally. And next week will be an important week for us to... For all of us to thank them, go out of our way. And not only are you correct in saying that it's an important part of the emergency response system and essential in supporting the other efforts of police, firefighters, and paramedics, but what a lot of people don't know is how hard the job is. And with over 30 years of law enforcement, there's one thing I've learned, and that's that I can't do that job. It is really, really hard. The multitasking, the balls, the sharp... The balls in the air, the sharps that they have to have at all times to figure out what's going on and to distill that and give the right information to the first responders in the field. It's just critical. And I'm in awe at how well our men and women do that, and thank you for the recognition. I'll pass it along.
Yeah, it's a... You're right. Having seen it firsthand, it's an amazing job, and it's a... You know, they do incredible work. Next is a proclamation about Arbor Day. 2022 Arbor Day proclamation of Village of Vernon Hills, a Tree City, USA community. Having recognized the economic, aesthetic, and environmental value, a thriving community forest brings to its residents and visitors, the Village of Vernon Hills has and continues to be committed to reforestation of land within its corporate boundaries and to the prudent management of its existing forest resources. The Village of Vernon Hills shall continue to enhance its reforestation and forestry management policies and practices, and shall continue to dedicate financial resources over and above Tree City, USA requirements. The Tree City, USA flag shall be flown at the public building on Arbor Day, April 29, 2022, to honor those residents and volunteers who have participated in the program of activity sponsored by the village. Now therefore be resolved that Roger Byrne, President of the Village of Vernon Hills, hereby proclaims that the Village of Vernon Hills shall officially observe Arbor Day on Saturday, May 14, 2022, and encourage citizens to participate in the appropriate activities and to take advantage of the benefits of the parks and other natural areas in our community. Again, Tree City, USA, we have... The perfect example is Greg's Landing. That was basically all farmland. It was just wide open. And now there are thousands of trees there that were all planted when that was developed. And Dave, you can probably address some of this better than I can.
Yeah, thank you very much. In terms of Arbor Day, that is a good reminder. We are celebrating it, May 14, at the Arbor Theater. What a beautiful location to celebrate it. We have a number of trees out there with plaques that describe what type of tree it is, and you'll learn a little bit of Latin, too, while you're there. We have a few of our staff. We have three or four arborists on staff. They will provide a tour and walk people around, answer questions, and talk about the different species. So it's a really nice event. Hopefully, some people can come out and join us. We've invited the Go Green group, too, and hopefully, they can join us also. So hopefully, people can join us.
Well, and you guys are also responsible for that, like when we had the problem with the Emerald Ashmore and that stuff, the amount of trees that had to be first taken down because they were dying or diseased, and then everything basically got replaced, correct? And that was quite a big number.
Yeah, I applaud the board's decision in terms of not only allowing us to remove the trees, but reforesting them. A lot of communities weren't able to do that. We were able to reforest them at the same time. There were 2,600 asteries that we had to remove in that period. It was quite an undertaking, but we were able to do that. And now when you go into those areas like Annapolis and Alexandria intersection that had very large, large asteries, they're growing back, and you really can't tell what devastation we had a few years back.
Yeah, good work, good work. Assistant village manager.
Good evening. Staff wanted to take this opportunity to share with the board and community some recent initiatives between the village and our area schools. First, during March, village staff had the opportunity to participate in real-life interviews at Vernon Hills High School. Members from the village were able to meet students in Consumer Management and Personal Finance and conduct mock interviews, and were able to provide direct feedback. Ms. Lynn Benson, the department supervisor for Career and Technical Education, always says the students well-prepared. During this mock interview process, we were able to meet some fantastic students, and we met one named Ms. Victoria Lukian. Victoria is a senior at Vernon Hills High School. She's on student council, and one of the activities she shared with us is she has a background in social media management. She is the coordinator for Vernon Hills Crew, and one of her jobs is handling not only the social media, but doing naming, design, and visual assets for her organization. We shared with her our page, our Instagram page, Experienced Vernon Hills, which we set up to better market our hospitality industry, and she said it needed some work. So we said, let's see what you can do. And in front of you, you'll see that we have a new thumbnail that we're going to proudly display this spring that she created on her own, just with a little dining component there. One of the cool things is some of the other students heard about that, and they asked for an opportunity as well. So one of the cool things we may begin doing is letting students handle the thumbnail and some of the content for the page coming up. So very cool. Next up, village staff will be participating in the Community Resources Fair at Hawthorne District 73 on April 23 from 12 PM to 2 PM at the School of Dual Language. This will be an opportunity for the village to connect with the community and share information on services and resources available from the village. The village will have employees in attendance who are fluent in Spanish. We'd like to give a shout-out, and thank you to Ms. Gabrielle Cervantes, who is the bilingual parent liaison for this invitation and allowing the village to connect with all members of our community. Staff from multiple departments, to include members of the manager's office, human resources, and the police department, will be participating in a career fair at Vernon Hills High School on April 26. This will be an opportunity for us to share the value of community and public service and the many career options available within a municipality. And I would now like to introduce Mr. Ariel Shifrin. Ariel is a member, a junior, at Vernon Hills High School, and he is participating in Student Government Day. While many people go and spend their spring break doing cool things, Ariel wanted to do something even better. He wanted to shadow the manager's office for the entire week.
Even better?
Even better, even better. Ariel spent his entire spring break with us, learning about administration, operations, was able to spend time in public works, community development, got to go to opening night of the Citizens Police Academy with the chief, do a ride-along, and meet in at least two community engagement sessions. He's got an interest in political science, and Jim and Carmen heads up, he wants to be a lawyer, so we may need a third seed.
Always need a good one.
Always need a good one. Always need a good one. Ariel will have a speaking part tonight under communications with me at the dais. So Ariel can introduce himself there, and I think you're going to be impressed. And as one final reminder, staff, members of our legal team, and trustee Takaoka and trustee Cook have been working with students from Stevenson High School's Catalyst Club. I have been sending correspondence to the trustees, keeping them updated on a couple issues they would like to present. They were planning on being here tonight, but they asked for a couple more weeks to prepare. I would imagine that on the April 19 agenda, you will see something on the cow in which they would like to engage in a conversation with us. So we just want to say thanks to all the parents, all the teachers, and all the fine students like Ariel. I think we're in good hands with the future, but everyone's doing a great job, and I think you're going to be impressed when Ariel speaks.
Thank you. Yeah, it's... Student involvement is so important. One of the ones that comes to mind was a number of years ago, when we were still doing the student government meeting, we had a group of students come in, and it was a mock meeting with students, and you were Mike, and they made a presentation to the... It was a shadow board of students about wanting a skate park over by the Park District facility. And they made such an incredible presentation that a couple of us talked to them while we were getting ready for the regular board meeting and said, hey, make the same presentation to the regular board, and let's see what happens. And as it turned out, there were a couple of developers there that night who also, when they heard the presentation came up, and one donated material, another one donated money, and within a very short time, a skate park was built at the Park District. And that all came from a student presentation at a board meeting. So it's always great to get the input.
It's awesome. You know, with Ariel, as you were with us, you want to speak on a couple of the things you did, and was there anything that interested you that maybe most that you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. I'm Ariel Shifrin. As Assistant Village Manager John Petrelllo said, I spent the week here mostly with the manager's office, learning about the different roles. I got to see community development, as well as public works, taking a tour of the public works facility. I spent an hour with the chief of police, and later, a number of hours doing a ride-along. So there were a lot of different kind of vantage points that I wasn't familiar with, that I got to become acquainted with, and see more of how municipal government works. So it was an incredible opportunity, and I'm very grateful for the manager's office.
You don't have it.
Thank you. Amazing.
Mine's not working.
Amazing. Mike, we can see you next. Amazing. His parents are... Is your mom here today? Mom, you've done a great job. You've done a great job. He was a joy to have, and just very intelligent, and I think you're going to be impressed with the speaking part coming up.
Well, and that's, as an educator, that's one of the questions I get all the time, what do I think about kids today? I say they're awesome. I mean, they're... You know, we see too much in the news about some of the problems and that, but if you visit any one of these schools and stuff, I get the vast majority of our kids are just awesome young people, and this is a perfect example. So thank you for coming, I see. Anybody else? Okay. Then the next item would be chief, review of the Vernon Hills 911 consolidation intergovernmental agreements?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out to the board on tonight's omnibus agenda, Resolution 2022 008, 009, and Resolution 10 are all important steps forward as we continue to work with other partners throughout the county on consolidation efforts. This essentially allows us to enter agreement with the Lake County and other partners in Lake County to streamline the backbone of the telecommunications system. So the TCs operate... Our telecommunications operate something called computer aided dispatch, which takes the 911 information, links it from their computers electronically right to the squad cars or to our mobile devices, and enables us to have information as we're arriving on the scene. And as the officers then continue that process, it goes right into what's called the Report Management System. And it's also, we've recently deployed electronic ticketing, and as of this weekend, you won't see officers handwriting any crash reports. That's all being done electronically. The challenge we've had in Lake County is that up until now, those have all been largely individualized deployments of this technology around the county, and we don't have a good sharing of that data. And as I've reported to the board in... Over the last year, a pretty comprehensive RFP process was done with 21 different public safety agencies and municipalities. Vendor was selected, those contracts were let, and we are now in the process of deploying that technology. And I would say over the next 12 months, we're going to see that technology come up and really make a difference in the efficiencies that we can enjoy every day, and this translates instantly to better public safety for our community. There's also some financial benefits to this. Our prediction right now is that just these arrangements alone are probably going to save the village about $45,000 a year and eliminate the need for long-term capital investment on its own. To the benefit of Vernon Hills, the vendor selected is actually the vendor we've used since 2008. So our telecommunications and officers and records personnel and administrators are going to have an easier time with this transition than some of the other agencies, but really, really exciting development. There's more to come, but getting this technology backbone is just essential. So I would encourage you to support those resolutions, and I'll come back in upcoming months with probably some more developments along this line for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nothing else from anybody on staff tonight? No? Okay. Then the next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Correct? Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve items A through double A? A through AA?
A. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Takaoka, Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Schenk. Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. No unfinished additional business, correct? Okay, then new business communication. Approval and passage of Resolution 2022-012, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for fantasy amusement company located at 122 Hawthorne Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is... This would be the Hawthorne Carnival, the same carnival we've seen, you know, except for COVID for the last number of years now. It would be located in the same place as last year. It would be on the west side of the mall property, between... Generally between Penny's and Macy's. The dates of the event are between May 26 and May 30. They'd have to follow the village's normal protocols, submit list of employees for background checks, and if deemed appropriate by the police department, to hire and pay for two off-duty police officers. So if the board believes that the special event is appropriate, then a motion approving the resolution attached to your packet is recommended. And Mr. Williams is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, are there any questions left on the board? This is... It's pretty much straightforward, the same as in the past?
Yes, sir. Everything's the same as we've been doing for years.
The only thing is, I know last year was quite difficult, I know, with masks and everything.
Last year was fun.
You did a good job.
The last minute, we were able to get open, and we hit the ground running, and I mean running. So we got a little more time this year, because last year, I think I came in... I don't know when I came in, the last week of May, and we were coming in in two weeks. So it was touch and go there.
There's no questions. Motion to approve, then.
Well, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve, second? Motion to second to approve after no other comments or questions? What's that?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Takaoka, Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Schenk. Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Tornado season reminder.
Good evening, Ariel.
Good evening. According to the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, on average, 50 tornadoes occur each year in Illinois. According to the National Weather Service, nearly 80% of all tornadoes occur from April 1 through June 30, during the late afternoon and early evening hours. Now is a good time to ensure that our community is able to receive timely information to keep our families safe. The Village of Vernon Hills maintains a network of warning sirens with voice message capability to provide mass notification of emergency situations. Residents may have heard the system being tested on the first Tuesday of each month at 10 AM. Emergency warning sirens are located at the Rustolian property off of Hawthorne Parkway, Oakwood Road, Route 45 and Fairway Drive, Greg's Parkway west of Lakeview, and at Vernon Hills High School. Residents are encouraged to be prepared for severe weather by taking the time to plan and prepare before severe weather arrives, having several means for receiving notification of severe weather, including use of weather apps and the village's emergency notification system, identifying a place to take shelter within your residence, and considering making an emergency plan. For more information on the subject, visit vernonhills.org and enter tornado safety in the search bar. Assistant Village Manager Petrella will now speak on Blackboard Connect, the village's emergency notification system.
Thank you, Ariel. As we enter the season where we may be vulnerable to the impacts of severe weather, we would like to take this opportunity to encourage all residents to sign up for the village's emergency notification system, known formally as Blackboard Connect. This system is maintained by the Vernon Hills Police Department and is a great communications tool for mass notification. The benefits of signing up for this service include: there is no cost, this is a free service provided by the village, subscribers will receive emergency messages by voice and text, messages can be received on one's home, work, and/or mobile phone. Should an emergency occur, such as severe weather or dangerous conditions such as a gas leak, subscribers will be the first to know. Residents can sign up for this service by going to the village website, which is vernonhills.org, and in the search bar entering tornado safety or the words Blackboard Connect. The village tests Blackboard Connect the first Tuesday of March and September. The village will be encouraging residents to sign up for Blackboard Connect on social media, Channel 4, the village voice, and the website during the month of April. Again, the service is free, and the information originates from a trusted source, being the Vernon Hills Police Department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To both of you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else under new business and communication? Anybody have anything? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the village board meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Now, once again, back to you.
We'd like to call the April 5, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne, trustees Schenk, Takaoka, Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Cook.
Here. Is there a motion to nominate the chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
And once again, like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
And I will second it.
Roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Schenk, Takaoka, Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye. Okay. First item of business is approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of March 15, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Schenk. Takaoka. Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item, the private activity bond pool resolution discussion?
Good evening. This item is for informational purposes and discussion this evening. Every year, the state of Illinois gives the ability for local municipalities to provide private entities bonding authority. They give bonding authority to the municipalities to allow for funding to private entities for, instance, construction, for improvements on their sites, land acquisition, et cetera, at tax-exempt bond rates. Most municipalities don't utilize this funding individually. It's based on a per capita rate. So for instance, the Village of Vernon Hills gets $110 per resident. In 2022, that total authority is just under $3 million, $2,000... $2,900,000. The Lake County Partners has created a clearinghouse for these bonds, so a means to pool all the bonds together and then advertise their ability to residents or property owners, businesses, and other entities within all communities within Lake County. They also, more importantly, manage all of the requests for financing, rather than having the individual municipality, typically through their finance department, handle the requests and handle the financing. This is a common request in Lake County and other parts of the state for a host municipality to pool all of the, or serve as the host, to manage the pool. In Lake County, it's Buffalo Grove. It has been since 2001. The village has given the authority through means of an ordinance or resolution to transfer the village's authority to Buffalo Grove, so that the village notifies the state of Illinois that any authority that the village has can be managed by this clearinghouse, which is then managed by Buffalo Grove. Lake County Partners has asked the village again to do this by the end of this month. Any resident, property owner, business within the village of Vernon Hills can still benefit from the exact amount that the village has been authorized to use from the state's bonding authority. It's just not managed by the village. The village has not had, as far as we understand, any request to utilize these funds this year or for 2022, and no entity has come to the village to purchase that authority, which can also happen. The village can also sell that authority. This is a very common process. It's done by some of our other clients in Lake County and all throughout northern part of the state. So we recommend that the board pass this resolution to allow the village's authority to then transfer through Lake County Partners to the village Buffalo Grove to manage the program. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
How well does our community, our business community, know about this?
That's a good question. I don't know if we do much promotion of this opportunity historically. It doesn't mean going forward that we couldn't make more of, I guess, a coordinated effort with Lake County Partners to make everyone aware of this opportunity, but my understanding is we don't normally do much promotion of this.
And Lake County Partners has a very comprehensive explanation and just a portal on their website for applications. I know I looked at it recently, and so we can definitely have staff identify that and work with residents if they want to look there. Some other communities have actually engaged in promoting different programs that can be used with the financing, housing programs, down payment assistance programs for buying new properties, stuff like that, so.
Any other question? I mean, what is the, what kind of financial exposure is there to the village in this kind of situation? Nothing, right?
Absolutely none. And because it's not being managed by the village, there's absolutely none.
This program gives businesses mainly, it was really designed to promote manufacturing businesses. It gives these businesses the opportunity to benefit from tax-exempt rates, really good financing rates. And the program also has been extended to address construction or renovation of residential units when certain income threshold levels have been met.
Right.
So yeah, no exposure to the village. It really is a program that's designed to share the village's tax-exempt bonding authority.
And any bonding is then done by the individual company, correct?
Well, the program will do, Buffalo Grove will do the bonding, Lake County Partners.
But the responsible for the bond being paid back is the responsibility of the applicant.
That's correct. I think tonight, we just need a consensus, right?
Correct. We would have a resolution prepared for the April 19th board meeting, which would make the transfer to Buffalo Grove official.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Next item is the community service grants, correct?
Yes. So as you're all familiar with, this is that time of year where we review our applications for social service grants. Just for a quick background, this program was established back in 2003 with the effort to provide grant funding support to local charitable and nonprofit organizations that provide services to Vernon Hills and our residents in our community. Since 2003, the village has actually issued over $713,000 in grants to across 18 different agencies that serve Vernon Hills. This January, we opened the application period for the 2022 grant program. In total, we received 12 applications from 12 different agencies for a total requested amount of about $51,000. Staff recently met with trustees Cook and Forrester to review the applications and provide a recommendation to the village board for consideration and review this evening. Included in your board packet is a summary chart that outlines the different applications we received. It also includes an outline of the funding that we had last year, the requested amount of the funding from each group for 2022, and the recommended funding for 2022. So what we're looking for this evening is consideration of that request. Overall, it would be a total award of $41,500 across 12 different agencies. Trustee Cook and Forrester, if you have any other comments or want to share maybe some experience on our review of the grants, but I think in general, we were looking to try and keep things status quo for most of the agencies. We did have a new application this year from Sue's Pantry, which you're familiar with from previous board meetings. And we did have an increase in one contribution to the cap program with special request from them this year because this social service grant program is the majority of their funding that they have for the year. And so they had requested an additional consideration from what they received last year. So we're here to answer any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to recommend approval of these grants in the amount of $41,500, and we would have an ordinance at the April 19th board meeting approving that. The other thing I'll just note in closing is that this does exceed the budget we discussed at the March 1st Committee of the Whole meeting by $1,500. Fortunately, the grant request from the Omni Youth Services came in under their typical amount, so we will have some additional funding that we could allot to make up for that $1,500 gap.
Trustee Forrester, do you want to comment?
Just that, I'm glad you brought up the gaps, because that was for discussion. And then also, just it was nice to see, it's a nice variety of organizations that submitted grant applications. From some, like you said, Sue's, that is local in our town, to the other ones in Lake County that serve us. So it was a nice variety, and it's, we're happy to help and glad to that we can satisfy most of the requests at the level that they were looking for.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, so do we need a motion?
I think a consensus to recommend approval, to draft an ordinance for the April 19th meeting.
If you pull the board, trustee Cook, that'd be fine, just pull the board.
All right. Trustee Marport?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am, too. Trustee Abin? Trustee Horv?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, let me. Then that's it for tonight on the Committee of the Whole, correct?
Correct. And then we will have a closed session this evening to discuss personnel and collective bargaining and approval of minutes per the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn, to go into closed session for those reasons?
Second.
Second.
A motion to second, this one, we need a roll call.
And to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
And to adjourn, yeah, adjourn the Committee of the Whole and go into the closed session.
Closed session. Yes.
Yes.
We do need a roll call.
Yes.
President Byrne, trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka, Schenk, Forrester.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
We are adjourned.